Good evening. We'll call to order the El Dorado City Commission meeting for July 17th, 2018. First order of business is called to order. After that would be roll call.
Mayor Hayes?
President.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badgley?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkens?
President.
Thank you. Invocation. Reverend Mark Summerfield lead us in invocation.
Shall we pray? Our gracious Father, we come to you this evening. We are thankful that we can call upon you in a time of seeking wisdom and guidance and direction. We pray for our city council tonight as they deliberate, as they go over the business of our community. Give them wisdom, give them guidance, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Having no proclamations today, we'll move to personal appearances and have we have the El Dorado Main Street for personal appearances today.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Emily Canell, Director of El Dorado Main Street. I'd like to introduce some supporters of the business at hand tonight. Mike Ward from TCG, who is a business owner and resident, not resident, but his business is resident on Main Street. And Samuel McVeigh, who is very involved in many entrepreneurial endeavors, but let's say Charlie's Appliance tonight. And Harold Harmon, who needs no introduction, from Walters. Thank you for this opportunity to present the material you have in front of you. This is a proposal that came out of the first two downtown assemblies. We are having a third, if you'd like to put it on your calendar. We'll be having downtown assemblies every 90 days at 5:30. The next one will be at 5:30 on August the 14th, Tuesday night, at 5:30 at Charlie's Appliance. Everyone downtown who has an interest in the downtown, either business owner, an employee, property owner, or both or all, are invited to come to the assemblies. We presented this as a proposal to check the wording and make sure that people felt that it was reflective of a group endeavor. The proposal for the record says, "By my signature, I respectfully request El Dorado City Commission to explore opportunities for improvement to the dumpster corrals and the functionality, safety, and aesthetics of the public parking lots in the downtown district." Specifically, the parking lots that are indicated on your map, the ones on Borden and Vine. The signatories on this are over 110. We could easily have gotten double this. All of the people on here either work on properties, they fit the categories, or operate businesses downtown. So, would you give any information you'd like to say about the proposal? Yeah?
Just really quick, yeah, Samuel McVeigh, Charlie's Appliance. With this petition, just specifically to our needs downtown, our, we're focusing, we just kind of made a big investment to our property downtown, kind of in it for the long haul. As far as back entrances go, it's not a great fit currently with our store. Doing any beautification we can, we actually secured the property behind. The one dumpster corral that's like knocked over is ours. I'm not going to say who knocked it over, but it was Charlie's Appliance, so I did say it. But as far as like turnaround and fixing that and communicating with the city is quite the ordeal, trying to get that all cleaned up. And if we were to do something a little more unique, it'd be more friendly to the truck traffic we have. We have a solid, at this point, we're probably four to five semis a week coming through that is not our truck bringing in product, dumping off products. So I secured the property behind it, put it in a drive-through straight to the truck route on our own dime, just to make it flow a little bit better. So, any process we can do back there to make it better, more pedestrian-friendly, more like, hey, customers park in the back and it'll look good walking in, is kind of the focus for us. And we'll definitely increase value to our property and our location being downtown. That's all I have to say about that. Any questions about that?
Cool. Sweet. Thanks, guys.
When we moved downtown 19 years ago, we made a back entrance and we probably had 50% of our customers come through the back entrance because sometimes it's easier for them to para- angle park instead of parallel park. And it's also easier for them to find a space to park and come in back entrance. And it's also a place where people that are wanting to go to some of the other businesses will walk through our back entrance to get to Main Street.
So, we are here to, as I said, respectfully request the commission to ask the staff to respond to this, to explore opportunities for improvement. The staff of the city has, we have every confidence, all of the abilities needed, to help redesign this parking experience. To make it function better on both, in both parking lots, both to serve the businesses because they are legitimate alleys, they have a service, but they are also the primary beginning of the pedestrian experience for people in downtown. The pedestrian experience begins when you get out of your car. Our downtown looks terrific when you're driving by at 35 or 40 miles an hour. It looks fantastic. When you park to do business, to take care of services, to meet with your friends and in restaurants, to do all the reasons, the multi-reasons people come downtown, you park your car. We would like to improve that. This slide, you'll see it, it shows the alley between ICI. There are almost 20 signatures from the people who work at ICI because that alley doesn't function well for that business. And like Charlie's and, or, excuse me, like Walters', a large percentage of their business enters through their back entrance. You'll see a sign in your photographs, I think, I think it's in there, that's on the inside of their door, which is, be careful, watch out for traffic because they have to jump back in often. You can go down and check that out at some time to see what that experience is like. ICI put those bumpers up along their building themselves to keep people from backing into it. They have a very nice plan. They'd like to talk to somebody about whether they can fit it in. The school district and Superintendent Givens regrets that she can't be here tonight, is very interested in helping improve the experience for all the people that come down to the district office. So, I think that it's time to at least begin developing a plan and figuring out how we can get it done. And have people know that you all are really interested in responding to their concerns, our concerns.
When you say it doesn't function, are you saying because it's narrow, like this? Like this?
That's what I mean, yes, it's quite narrow.
Well, you can't move the building.
No.
And we don't own the pole line.
No, but there are ways, and we think, Commissioner Badgley, that we can improve that experience, maybe putting the entrance to the parking lot in the middle of the block and changing the orientation of the parking, north and south, as opposed to pulling in nose-first to the buildings in a line that actually, when that's full, and it often is, obstructs pedestrians parking from the outer areas. We don't know exactly what the solutions are, but that's a situation, it is below code, the width of that, and I don't have my maps with me, but I believe, Scott, if you can help me with this, I think that's only 16 feet, or less than 16 feet, that alleyway. And there is a time when that functioned a lot better than it does now, but our vehicles are bigger and the traffic is more, thank goodness.
So, what are you guys looking for? What is the, I mean, I see the problem, and I've seen it, you know, I've partaked in most of the businesses, but I guess what I'm, you know, I, when I tell my employees, as I, you know, my personal businesses, you know, great, you found the problem, what's your solution?
That's right.
And so that's where I, like, I guess what I'm saying is, is as business owners, you guys, I'm assuming you have something that you would think would work, that you would like to see. And that's kind of where, I guess what I'm asking is, is yes, you brought me a problem, but you haven't brought me any ideas to solution.
Well, but our idea is that, in fact, we do have ideas and we would like to have, but we are not traffic designers.
No, no, and I get that, and I'm not expecting, I'm not expecting you to have a full plan, but, but like, what I, I guess what I'm saying is, is I would like, I would have liked to have seen not just the problem, I would have liked to have seen you guys go, hey, this, here's the problem, this is what we'd like to see. And then, between you guys, what your idea is with city staff, then city staff has an idea of what you guys want.
Well, I-
I guess doing the legwork ahead of time, before you brought it to me.
I would, I would like to see you have a focal group with the staff and decide what you guys can, you get this done and move forward on it. Because the parking lot on South Main is supposed to be landscaped and it never has been. It's sitting there wide open. That's the one for the apartments that are sitting behind at the Opera House. That's the way it was, was set up with the, with the planning commission and approved by the city commission, and it never has been completed.
But evidently that some progress is being made on that, thank goodness. That's a special use permit that needs to be closed and we're well aware of that. But our sense is that we felt that the appropriate thing, Commissioner Guthrie, was to come to the commission, let you know that it's not just one or two people that see this as a problem, and that we know that you have lots of priorities. We would like you to give permission to the staff to work with us, to come up with solutions for management of dumpsters, for the challenges of trash and recyclables and all of that kind of thing, the weight of the trash trucks, the semis that have to come through. You're right, the businesses know when their deliveries have to be and how those alleys have to function, but at the same time, so, you know, if I come up and say, oh, we should have lovely flowers and banners and so forth, but really, it has to function on many levels. And staff knows what the requirements are and how wide things should be. ICI has a very nice treatment they'd like to see there. And there, we'd like to work, obviously, together, but I don't think we can go to staff without the commission saying, you think that this is a good idea.
Well, and I guess I would say, Emily, and you've had some of these conversations at Main Street meetings and it's come at the assemblies that I've been at, and thank you for this. My direction back was, okay, let's, let's, just let the commission know just what you're saying, that it's more than a few people asking to do this. And the request at that point was, and I think, and what I hear you saying and agree with, is this number of people are asking that city staff or city commission and city staff look at this as a real, real issue and, and work together to get it done. Now, I think, at this point, I hear them asking the city commission to direct the staff to move forward with what are, what are the opportunities. I think that group was brainstorming several things, but without really even knowing what the parameters, what could really happen and what not. So, to me, it's, it's an official ask with, with a lot of support to, for us to direct the staff to, to look into that, identify the cost, probably going to cost some money to study it.
Yeah.
So, those kind of things, that's, that's what I'm hearing out of it.
So, Scott, on those parking lots back there, are they assessed to the businesses if they get improved? Or is that a city?
No, the city owns that, that property. Not knowing how they originally created, I doubt that they would have been, but I don't know that 100% either.
Their-
The city owns all of that property, any of those free parking spots.
So, did you guys rent the bit, the trash dumpsters from the city?
Yeah, it's a, it's a fee, just like you pay-
And then we just, we just had those, we just had those containers or-
Corrals.
Fences, corrals, thank you.
Who's responsible for the fencing around it, Sam?
The city, yeah, public works. That's who we communicate with, yeah.
Actually, in anticipation of this ask, I asked Brad to start looking at the corrals and just different ways of designing, because as the pictures indicated, some of these corrals are in horrible shape. And so, he's already been charged with looking at how do we, how do we, first of all, design a corral that can withstand the test of time and be a little stronger, be a little more aesthetically pleasing. Now, how it actually gets laid out, you know, if we have to reconfigure how parking is done and, and that sort of thing, we don't yet know, but he's already started on working on a better corral design that could facilitate a longer lifespan and ultimately make things look a little better. And so I think we've already kind of stayed, started the process at the staff level of addressing this, and I think by taking what we've kind of thought of and marrying it with input from the public, I think we'll be able to address this situation and come up with, you know, number one, what are we going to, what are we going to do about it? Two, what are the costs? And three, how are we going to finance it? And then, once we have that all together, we can bring it back and have a plan.
Can I chime in one thing real quick on you and Matt? As far as like what we need, it's really simple, it's aesthetics and it's location. The support for those are literally up against the alley, all the traffic's going through, so they're going to get knocked out. That's why they're not holding up.
It makes sense.
I mean, location, then aesthetics is going to be, we're downtown, brick building situation, pedestrian-friendly. It's different on the west side of town, as far as what dumpster corrals probably need to look like versus downtown. We're spoiled.
What do you mean differently?
As far as, I think, as far as aesthetics go, we want to be a pedestrian-friendly, slow-traffic-paced, retail-oriented, restaurant-oriented downtown, right? We're historic Main Street, we want it to look good, and we want it all to blend together. So currently, we have all those brick buildings, doing some type of brick corral would, would look pretty good and probably tie in really well. Move it back away from the alley so it's only in parking traffic, not in through traffic.
That's, and that was, that, for me to wrap my head around what you guys were, that's, that's what I was looking for, just kind of the, what you wanted to see. You want those corrals away from the buildings.
So, if we reduce-
Not too far.
Well, that's, that's right. I would have thought, I would have thought opposite. Like, I was thinking maybe closer, but not.
Okay. If we reduce the amount of corrals and made them larger?
Oh, yeah.
Would that help, instead of having them all over the parking lot?
For us, honestly, we all have to share recycling. So, like, the current situation, there's not enough room for enough recycle bins, so literally, from Charlie's all the way down to the corner lot of Bruco, we all share a recycle bin.
Right.
And then Walters has one next door. And once I run out of room, which we are filling that with cardboard, we fill it up every day, and, and then all of a sudden Walters is overfilling. So, going larger and getting more efficient, as far as, we do need more dumpster space, like, over the top anyway, so yeah, that's a great, we totally be, we're all walking far anyway to make it happen, just to share dumpsters, so.
Okay.
So, as I look at some of this trash, is some of this dumped by others than just the businesses? The design will actually have to work to our city manager's point in tandem with management. And there are a lot of questions and things. We, as the downtown is becoming happily denser, and we have very high occupancy with residents, and we encourage that and we want that, our, perhaps our dumpster policies, not just for businesses, but for residents and their needs in the downtown, and who they are and what their capacities are, all of that would be part of the management discussion. You can't design something that can't be managed well, that causes a big problem for management. So we have to work together with all of that. In terms of, there may be some policy suggestions along with all of this. We don't have any of the photographs in what you see of some of the examples of solutions to the dumpster problem that other businesses, both in El Dorado and many other places, have. And we have that collection and we'll get that to staff just for their own interests. But there are books and magazines and all kinds of professional documents, not to mention what's online, in terms of options for us, with a very wide range of whether they're locked or not locked, whether they're brick, how do you protect brick, what kinds of curved structure planting, what kinds of surfaces do you have to have to take heavy trash trucks back there? Do you, I mean, all of those questions, we'll learn a lot together.
Thank you. I think, thanks for your efforts, thanks to everybody's-
Thanks, guys.
-for your work on this. We'll take this seriously and look forward from here.
Does that mean you have permission to work on this, David?
Well, I got interpreted.
Does that have to be a motion?
No.
Doesn't need to be a motion.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your consideration, appreciate it.
So, David, I'm assuming the start of this process would be kind of an evaluation of what everything looks like right now? Could we see that, when you get that figured out?
Sure.
I'd just, I'd be interested to kind of see what we have. I mean, I know it's seen out there, but I don't, just for my own personal information, just kind of-
Yeah, and I guess to the last point about the width of the concrete and everything, we've, we've already moved forward to the project to actually approve those downtown alleys. Scott, those, that project's pretty much done, is that correct?
We've got a few blocks done, we've got some more to do. But yeah, we're just making repairs to those alleys that haven't seen anything done to them since they were originally paved, other than utility companies going in there and cutting them and fixing patches, so.
Where have you hit?
We've started down on Locust, so, down there, and we've worked our way up two blocks to the north, fixed up those alleys.
So you've hit Locust, and then, what would that be, Vine?
Ash.
Ash.
Yeah.
Vine, all on this?
All, all on the east side of Main so far.
Okay, so, so I can see what, what it looks like. Perfect, thank you.
And there are a number of tools that are available to cities to address situations like this. So a good example would be a community improvement district, which is also known as a CID. Cities across the state have utilized this tool. There's two methods that it can raise money. One is in the form of an additional sales tax, one is in the, the other is increased, well, not increased, but special assessments. You can do one or both, and I'm not saying we can do either of them by any means, but this is just one tool that cities have used to finance and fund infrastructure projects, predominantly in downtowns, although they've been used for a number of other projects throughout the state of Kansas, including in El Dorado. But the city, for example, could use something like that to not only look at dumpsters, but a number of different things. But it would require the property owners and businesses to consent to it. So there's a number, but, well, I guess what I was going with is, there's a number of tools available to us to address this. So, it won't be like, oh, we came up with a great plan and, sorry, there's no way to fund it. There are tools available to do that.
Great, thank you. So we, with that, move forward and keep us informed on what's going on. Public comment? Anybody wish to address the commission regarding items not on our agenda?
Good evening, I'm Judith Durant. I'm president of Kids Need to Eat, that sponsors the Kids' Summer Lunchbox program, so I thought I'd put in a little plug for the program while I'm here. As many people know, we distribute free foods to kids during the summer. Every summer, we've been doing it for six years. This summer, we're at seven different locations, including six that are served by our Globus, the green lunchbox on wheels, and then a walk-in meal site at the Family Worship Center. The location and times of meal sites are publicized in the shopper's guide, we have an ad every single week over the summer. They're also on posters all over in town, particularly at the library, for example. And our website, kidsnitee.org, or our Facebook page, Kids Need to Eat, also has information about our meal sites. But there's two misconceptions that I wanted to correct real quick. One is, is that we are a poverty program and kids who come to our, our meal site who don't really need the food are taking food out of the mouth for poor kids. We are a summer nutrition program. Our goal is to promote healthy nutrition over the summer so that kids can have a developmentally successful summer and return to school better ready to learn in August. We're for all kids ages 18 to 1, and even kids a little bit younger than that, if they're ready for, for table food, they're welcome to come too. On Mondays, we invite adults who come with kids, parents, grandparents, uncles, aunts, we invite them to eat with us for free every day of the week. And our program is just weekdays through August 10th. We also invite pregnant moms who are on WIC or eligible for WIC to eat with us every day because we see this as part of child nutrition. And so we are a program for all kids that age of 18 and under that we invite to come to our meal sites, enjoy some time with us, enjoy times with other kids, and have some healthy nutrition. The second misperception is that it's, one of our meal sites, the latest one in the day, is at the swimming pool at Forest Park, and that's from 2:30 to 3:00 in the afternoon. The Globus is there. I want to make sure that kids know that they don't have to come to the pool and swim in order to come on the bus to eat with us. They do make an announcement in the pool when we arrive, and most of our guests are indeed swimmers. But you don't have to be a swimmer to be invited to come eat on the bus. And the reason I make this point is a lot of the kids have already used up their 24 punches. And so, they're not able to come to the pool to swim for free at a reduced price anymore. It's the hottest time of the year. So, we know that kids who were eating with us during our first several weeks are no longer, and some of them are no longer coming, and we're suspecting it's because they're not coming to swim. We want people to know, come to Forest Park, come to any of our meal sites, whether or not you're swimming or splashing or whatever, we're, you're most welcome to eat for free with us. Thank you for the time.
Thanks.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Two items on your consent agenda that, which were in your packet, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Okay, as we moved in second, any further comment? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Right, having no old business, we'll move to new business. First thing on our business agenda, new business, would be the BCC facilities lease agreement. This is something we talked about Wednesday at our work session. Any different information today than we talked about on Wednesday?
So, the two agreements in front of you are, one is for East Park Softball Complex on the, the specific to North Field. The second agreement is for McDonald Stadium, and these, both these agreements are for Butler Community College's use of these two facilities for, so their softball and baseball I can go through the agreements, we've already done that, but in essence, those are the boilerplate. Just for the public's information, in case they haven't read them, the East Park North Field, we, both of these agreements are not exclusive agreements, meaning that while this is an agreement with Butler Community College, it's not exclusive, meaning USD 490 or the Broncos or other parties can utilize these fields. We're going to create a master schedule and what, provided there's room in the schedule, you can get on the schedule for practices or games or whatnot. But the way this works, Butler Community College will effectively maintain and operate the North Field to include fertilizing, grass, grass planting, mowing, applying insecticide, et cetera. So they will take care of the entire field, inside the fences during their seasons, and then also during the off-season as well. As a result of that, they will also, they will pay for all the seed, all of the fertilizer, et cetera. The city, the city will charge a lease payment because they're in essence- The city, the city will charge a lease payment, because they're in essence going to take care of that field and buy all the materials and provide the labor. They will be utilizing the city's equipment for maintenance, so the mowers, tractors, there's a list of equipment that's included in the agreement, so that's kind of the agreement for the north field. On McDonald Stadium, that's a little bit different, because that field is largely turf, so there's not a lot of upkeep, particularly on the infield. The city, however, will be responsible for mowing, seeding, applying insecticide, utilizing the outfield, and we will utilize our equipment as we currently do with that field, the Broncos and USD 490, those entities will have access to the field just like they do today. And I think that's kind of, that's the bulk of the agreements. I'll stand for any questions or thoughts on that. These are one-year agreements, we will review the performance of the agreements, and then that's an opportunity for us to make any changes if necessary, and then to continue. And there are provisions for either party to get out of the agreements if they so desire as well.
And Butler trustees approve these?
It's my understanding that they have reviewed the agreements, and they have in fact approved them as part of their breaking process.
And city staff is fine with this, too?
Yes, we've spent a considerable amount of time working on the details of these agreements, and I think we're very comfortable where they are today. The other, the final comment I'll say about that is that shortly after, assuming that, of course, the commission approves these, we're going to have a meeting with Butler staff to go over the responsibilities of both parties with respect to both the fields, and in addition to that, we're also going to conduct onsite inspections for both the north field and McDonald Stadium, so we can get a current conditions assessment, if you will, and go through kind of what that looks like with everybody in the presence. That will include not only Butler, but also USD 490 and also probably the Broncos.
And there's one of these in place with the Broncos also?
Presently, there's not.
Okay, because we've done this, we've done the school district 490, now we've got, so is the next step, get the Broncos and kind of put that in writing also?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Well, we've watched this, we've watched this for a few months now, I'd say kudos to staff for getting this. I like it, I think it's, takes care of everybody, gets it kind of out of everybody's hands to just evaluate on their own, so...
Okay, any further questions or comments? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a change to that motion, that should be moved to direct the city manager to sign that agreement, not the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct the city manager to sign the lease agreement with BCC regarding the use of McDonald Stadium in the north field at the East Park softball complex.
It's been moved in second, any further question or comment? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you for your work. Next item on our agenda would be special use application for 1305 South and Poria Street. This is an application that came to us through the planning commission, and currently the application has been, is, planning commission recommends, they did not approve it.
Yeah, the planning commission held a public hearing on June 28th to review this special permit, and, and the special permit request was for an accessory structure, the applicants are here as well. Planning commission recommended denial, we have since received some suggested revisions, and at this point, staff would recommend sending back to the planning commission based on new evidence, so I'll let the applicant go ahead if you so wish.
Okay. Yes, that your name is?
I'm Sonia Fritsch, and this is my husband, Tim.
He resides at 1305 South in Poria. We were, at the time, we were looking at doing a forty by sixty foot, forty through wide, sixty foot, fourteen foot sidewalls was the facade, and obviously, we went and also put a twenty foot by eight foot wide awning on the side between the new build and our home. Since the planning commission meeting, we actually, we actually did a revision to a thirty foot wide by fifty foot wide, or fifty foot length, I'm sorry, and we basically took off the eight foot by twenty foot in length awning. We also dropped the height down from fourteen foot to thirteen foot. Originally, our plan was right at 2,000 square foot building, which was thought of kind of being rather large for that area, and there was also some concern of not being able to see other homes as you came driving north down in Poria Street, so I took the liberty with my contractor to do some measurements on the new, the new build. With a thirteen foot, we would actually be able to drop that down from about nineteen foot in peak height of the, of the pre-existing plans for the older building to about sixteen and a half.
Sixteen and a half.
Yes. We also lessened the square footage by just under 500, about 464 or 90 square feet of building, which that would put us right at about, I believe I figured out, for a 1,200 square foot building, which is okay to build, about 1,500 square foot. So at this point, instead of the 2,000 square foot building, I'm asking for a concession to build a 1,500 square foot building, which I've given to, submitted to J, so we should help, we hope to run that through the planning commission. The other thing that we also looked at was some of the aesthetics on the north side. If we were, if we were able to go ahead and do what our new plan, we were willing to put in some eight to ten foot trees, I've got three of them planned, just plotted in here, and then also, we're going to be running a composite fence from the property line that's back to the property off of High Street to their back, just to the easement per se, and then out to the front of our building and wrap around to the front of our, connect our home to the shed. So we would, we wanted to do that out of a composite material, where we'd obviously look and draw the same of all the homes within our area. We want to keep that, obviously keeping our neighbors in mind as, as much as anyone else to keep their property looking just as good, so, that, that's kind of what we're proposing now, I guess if there's any questions, I'll...
Yeah, and the city commission has a copy of your letter, you said it, so that was included in their packet today, and really, staff believes this, at the planning commission level, to review those details and the modifications to the original application, as far as the reduced square footage, the reduced sidewall height of the structure, against some of the self-implemented conditions to the request, like the planting of trees and the fence and those sorts of things, so that's all things, staff would recommend the planning commission kind of consider and look at this again at their next meeting.
So you recommend we send it back to the planning commission? Yeah, I would recommend that, too, this is, this is different than they, they discussed, because of that, I think, is we owe it to them to weigh in like that.
Well, and another thing, I mean, this, we, everybody around us was contacted, they were sent letters about what building we were going to build, we even went around to some of our neighbors, gave them a little packet of what building we were going to build, and said, if you have any questions, concerns, please let us know. And I said, like, letters went out to everybody, not one of our neighbors, except for one that lives on South Topeka, has said anything about us building this building. There was no opposition, except for the one person, and he's actually the person who sold us the lot to build it on. So when the planning commission turned us down, it's like, the only opposition is that one person. And we can build a building, I mean, he said he doesn't want to see a building there, well, we can build a thirty by forty building.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate your efforts.
It's either the people build this building, or they build a big parking lot, because their boat, their pickup trucks, and their camper cannot sit on grass by Sydney ordinance, they have to have a, have to have it on concrete. So you're either going to have a concrete slab out there, or you're going to have a building out there, you're going to have one or the other, and that's what's going to happen in that neighborhood. So nobody in that neighborhood is against what's going to go on now, and the fact of bringing in the duplexes into this subject is asinine, that's two different things. This is a building that he sold the land to, these people could build this building on, the neighbor back there lives directly behind him, I live across the street, neither one of us care. And you go down the neighborhood, and nobody else in the neighborhood cares, you go down to Finney, you go to Patrick Light's house down there, he's got the same type of building, it sticks over the top of all the houses, I see it through my bay window, I don't care about it. You go to the corner, you look at the shack on the corner, and that's sitting right in the neighborhood, and that's reducing the, the house values. I mean, you can't say this one thing is going to reduce values, when you've got that shack sitting on the corner, and nobody will do anything about it, and they're going to put more of these buildings in town, there's one going to go in on Denver, and there's another one going to go in somewhere else in town, we're going to have more of these, because people can't park their RV equipment in their yards anymore, and they need that total building, because their camper height and their pontoon boat height, to be able to park it in their yard.
Scott, did the building at 1134 South in Poria, did it require a special use permit, if it's 1,500 square feet?
Yeah, it would have, yeah.
I mean, that wasn't that long ago, right?
Zach Patrick's?
Yeah. What'd the planning commission say about that one?
They agreed to it.
Agreed to it. So what's the difference?
I think it, it's looking at the compatibility of the neighborhood, Mr. Light's, you know, accessory structure sets back.
Oh, and this one sets out a little farther?
This would be even with their house. In the original request, 1960, now the planning commission hasn't heard about the 1,500, and they haven't heard about the lower sidewall height. There, there was a concern, I mean, one of the, one of the things the planning commission is tasked with is to look at the capa, I can't even hear it.
Compatibility.
With the neighborhood, I mean, is this structure going to overwhelm the neighborhood? Does it fit? Does it, does it just play in well, is it out of scale, is it out of context? So that's, those are some of the things they're tasked to consider looking at.
So basically, all we can do right now is send it back to the planning commission.
We can override it.
We can override it and approve it.
Override it and approve what, the 1,900 one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can. We can override it and approve the 1,500 one? Or does that require? I'm just talking, I'm just, in my, I'm just talking legally, is all I'm asking, is if we wanted to approve and put the condition on that it can, it's 1,500 square feet and it's got a thirteen foot sidewall?
It would be a super majority of you all.
Correct, but, but that's within our power to do. Okay, I'm just, was one clarification, was all.
Personally, that would be an unwise move, I think.
I didn't say that, I just said, I just wanted to know what our options were.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to say that dealing with your guys' neighborhood in the past, I mean, I, them people not showing up, not to protest, it, it sounds like, I mean, that's, that's one way or the other with your, with your guys' neighborhood, I mean, you guys are very vocal, so, I mean, I, I, I put that into some, some weight behind that. I say we send it back to, I say we send it back to the planning commission, let them look at it, see what they think, and give them their due. Is that going, would that create a hardship for you folks? I mean, how much time are we talking about, Scott, if it goes back to the planning commission and back to us?
It'd be the August meeting of the planning commission, so the Thursday in August, and it'd be back to you guys' first meeting in September.
So, five weeks, six weeks?
I just have to, just have to get ahold of my contractor and probably move our start date back further, and we're, they're about two months back, we're probably about three weeks in, so we have about five more weeks before they go start, and I can call them and...
Kick it back another week, if, if, if you were successful.
I know, Kendra, you said that it wasn't wise, that the smaller proposal, I mean, we're trying to work with the neighborhood, you know, and like I said, there wasn't opposition there.
My, my only, my only opposition, Sonia, is overriding the planning commission and not giving them the opportunity to look at your new proposal and say, oh, hey, that's a whole lot better.
Well, yeah, and, and my, my challenge is, this is not what the public hearing was about, I mean, the public hearing was a different type of project, I know that, I know the details are small, but that's still, to me, if there's a public hearing on this and the commission's going to go on that, I don't think that's, I don't think that's right. So, to me, I appreciate your efforts of, of making changes, but, but I, but I think the process needs to be, needs to be pure, and that's my opinion.
And I'll be honest with you, in eight and a half years, I voted against the recommendation of the planning commission once, and it was a split vote, it wasn't unanimous, so I'd have a tough time voting to overrule unanimous.
The wrath that would have to be paid.
Oh, well, I've had wrath before, but...
So, I, I think, from what I'm hearing, to go back to the planning commission, thanks for you, thanks for your work and your willingness to make some changes, continue to have conversations with your neighborhood and let them know that it's coming up and do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To go back.
I'd rather it be just approved, but, but it'll work.
Do we need a motion to send it back to the planning commission?
Yes, please do.
Okay, so I'd entertain the motion.
I move to, on case number 18-03-SUP, to return to the planning commission for further review.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further conversation? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, it would be special use permit for 105 South Race Street.
Yes, the planning commission also held a public hearing June 28th on this issue, for an application to allow an eight foot fence at 105 Race Street. Anything over six foot tall fence requires a special use permit, and the applicants are here, if you have any questions of them. Planning commission recommended approval by a three-two vote.
So when you put this eight foot tall fence up, where your swimming pool is now, you'll take that eight foot tall fence down?
That's the other end of the property, so let me clarify a little bit, thank you. So we live at 105 Race Street, Peter and I do, and it's a great residential neighborhood, there's been a lot of houses on Race Street that are being redeveloped and updated, and we want to keep the residential character of that neighborhood. So, about a year or two ago, somebody tried to rezone these properties as commercial, and we were successful in not having that happen, and then we had the opportunity to buy the properties, so that we could keep them residential, and that seemed like the wisest course to go. But the other thing that's interesting about this is these two properties have really deep yards, they go behind our house, and the yellow one is where our existing, you can see, our pool is on that side yard, that goes much deeper, and all of the other yards on Race Street, down to about the 320 address, all of them have really deep yards, but we don't, and the reason we don't have the deep yards is because the houses on Central were built first, and they are deep, 200 feet deep. So what we're doing is we're expanding our backyard, so that we're our new expanded backyard by taking off about 100 feet from the back of those two properties, means our backyards now will be, have the same depth as all the other properties to the south of us. And it leaves a, on West Central, you take the two pieces left, and you of us. Um, and it leaves a, on West Central, you take the two pieces left and you have a property that's about a hundred by one hundred, and eventually we'll do the formalities. We've had it resurveyed, but we'll do the formalities or replanting it too. I've heard a lot of speculation about what we're gonna do with those properties, and they're very amusing. But, um, I wanna assure you, it's residential is our goal. We have no immediate goals to build on the property that's on West Central, but if we ever did, it would be residential in character. So we want, what we have in our house, our house was built in the, um, late nineteen forties, early nineteen fifties. It's a very unique house, and we love living in it. We already have an eight-foot fence. In fact, I suspect it's really a ten-foot fence that we have around the back of our house. We're gonna take down that fence and move it to the west because we now have a hundred additional feet of backyard. And so we're gonna move it to the west. And so in essence, we're asking you to grandfather in what we already have by letting us keep an eight-foot fence, uh, back there. And there's some other reasons going on there. So just FYI, we're gonna be planting a pocket of prairie back there. We're gonna have our own little Kansas prairie in our backyard there, and, um, Melvin Construction is helping us do that. I'm very excited about that. But they, but the land slopes, and because the land slopes down to the west, a six-foot fence gives public a greater view of us because of the sloping land. With an eight-foot fence, we would have similar privacy to what we have now. It would be a little bit less because of slope and moving an eight fence down to eight, uh, west. But also, um, there's a couple of things, dynamics going on there. We do have a pool, and we love our pool, and we hope that we've been good neighbors with our pool. But pools have been known to be kind of an attractive nuisance. We don't wanna advertise the fact that we have this pool. A lower fence makes our pool much more visible from popular street than it would otherwise. Before we built our pool, we had a big trespassing problem. A lot of, um, young adults and older teens like to find shortcuts from Race Street over to the liquor store and other businesses on West Central. And with our, building of our pool, we were able to reduce considerably because of our fence, the trespassing. So we want to protect our neighbors from trespassing as well as ourselves. A lot of our neighbors have barking dogs who sit outside in their backyards. We're very sensitive to seeing people and activities. So the eight-foot fence helps to reduce the amount of barking that, um, all the neighborhood will be exposed to. But most importantly, we're basically asking you to grandfather in what we already have, but we're just gonna move it, move it. So this, out of curiosity, you might wanna know, what are we gonna do with that other land on the other side of the fence that will be the West Central property? And we're just gonna landscape it, plant grass there, keep it mowed, and, and just enjoy the peace and quiet of knowing no business is there.
Are you gonna take down the fences?
Once we get the new ones up, yes. We'll take down the old fences. It's gonna be composite wood, similar to the pool fence, but probably not that color, more of a, a nat- a nature type color.
It's gonna be nice.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Any other questions or comments on this special use permit?
Thank you for your consideration.
Sure, thank you. No, I'd entertain a motion.
What's the ordinance number?
G twelve eighty.
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval, case number eighteen dash zero-two SGP requested, an SGP for an eight-foot fence, and the ordinance number G twelve eighty be approved.
Second.
Case moved in second. Any further comment? All right, roll call.
Mayor, names?
Yes.
Commissioner Duffy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bagley?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be reports. Anything from the city commission and advisory board updates?
I have nothing.
Want to extend welcome to all the veterans and their families this weekend as they head out to the lake and hopefully come into town and enjoy some of our amenities here in town. And I also wanted to, uh, just comment on, uh, last week, we said goodbye to a long time. He hadn't, they hadn't lived here for, since the late seventies, but Don Demo passed away. Uh, they're, uh, they're in their fourth generation now of, uh, being our local Landis or Bush wholesalers here in town, and, and they also have a, have one in Independence. And I've known, or I knew Don my entire life, and he was a great guy, and he did a lot for the town, and, um, was very active. And even when he moved to Independence, he was still very active in El Dorado. So he'll be ver- he'll be missed, and condolences to his family, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I renewed my driver's license today, and I went over to Handover, and it was a nightmare. There was about a hundred people in there, and I didn't have the right document, so I had to come back home. Uh, then I went over, I was told Eureka, those driver's license. I drove over there, walked right in, got my new driver's license, and walked right out. And I just wanted to let the people know, El Dorado, they can go to Eureka and have it done, and just walk right in and walk right out. The courthouse will have ours back in August, but right now you can go to Eureka. So...
That's good information.
So we are getting one back?
Yeah.
Possibly in August.
Okay. Um, I got a couple. So last night, we were at Drums Across Kansas, and I, I had a, I don't know why I thought of this as walking out, but like I, I ran into chief, but I didn't run into any police or campus security or anything like that out there. Did we have a presence out there? Did, did the college have a presence, what?
No, I saw the college.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see any. That's why, I was just curious of how that...
I saw the El Dorado PD when I went to, when I came to pick Cindy and Mama up, I saw.
You El Dorado PD?
I saw El Dorado PD out there.
Kurt Zeman, chief, El Dorado PD. Uh, I'd actually got with Molly a couple of weeks ago, and we weren't asked to help with that this year. Uh, but I asked my officers if they weren't busy to walk around, and Tabitha tells me two or three of them showed up and were there for, uh, two or three of the performances, and they got called away. Uh, when I got there, I know there was one Butler or college officer there. Uh, but looking in the future, we had a mess at Haverhill and Twanda at the traffic light, and Molly, actually Molly has seen me there and said, well, they've requested traffic control there, Haverhill and Twanda at the last minute, for what let out in the evening. So I called the on-duty lieutenant, if you can do this, do it. Then Tabitha called me and said, they've got an issue there now, and those kids were going right down the middle of the street with their equipment, and it was a bad deal. So... And that's the intersection that I came from, through to pick up my wife and mother-in-law. And, and it wasn't just the equipment that was coming down there. There were people that weren't crossing at the, at the corner, and they were walking right across Haverhill, and there were a lot of them. So I called the lieutenant back, and we had three officers that directed traffic there for over two hours, and I guess it was a nightmare.
Okay.
I needed to get with Brad because those lights were on flash. Apparently, the crosswalk signals won't work when they're on flash. Either that or something's going on. So I think in the future, we have an event like that, we probably shouldn't have them on flash to where we can control the crosswalks or whatever. But, yeah, we did end up being there, and they directed traffic for about three hours, so...
But that was, that was the extent of kind of how, how it went last night on your end?
Yes.
I, I kind of felt that...
I don't, I don't think there was any other issues other than the traffic quietmire, so...
I, I felt, I felt that way, that it was a pretty good event, and everything seemed to go really well.
It was a great event.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks.
Which brings me to my next point. Have, have we entertained or looked at any type of traffic control coming out of the stadium? Um, is that, has that been discussed in the past? You know, I'm, I'm just trying to kind of, I'm factifying.
You know, diff- different events cert has worked to, uh, to, uh, navigate folks in and out. At times when Butler's had large football games, large attendance, um, Public Works has gone in main. We operate the traffic signals, um, at Central and Haverhill to allow the green to be longer and move more traffic, try to keep the flow going.
Okay, so, but would like, we haven't investigated to see if there's a knee or way to, to make that any better or in the past. Like, I'm not saying that like last night was indicative of anything. I'm just kinda, lights or anything coming out of the stadium like that?
Well, when, I think, when we've anticipated those crowds, especially the first year of the stadium.
Yeah.
They were pretty much, you know, you had volunteers there directing folks in and out onto Haverhill.
Okay.
You had Public Works operating the signals manually.
So that, that's...
To be as efficient as we possibly could.
That, that's our contingency, if you will, is kind of, okay. Um, I noticed there was a big hole at Central and Gordy, and I was, and I noticed that we've got like six to eight inches of asphalt on top of brick right there. How far does that brick run? How far down does it go? Uh, back to the west or east?
The brick goes, um, about to Star Street. Um, it does go on up to Denver or so and areas, but it's really narrow. Um, you have some along Main as well.
You say it's narrow. What do you mean narrow?
I mean, originally, Central was two lanes wide, and then at one time, they had medians in it, and it's just, it's not complete brick under the whole pavement that exists today.
Is that gonna cause us issues down the road? Is that, I mean, it is, because you know, we, we do get a lot of heavy traffic down there. We, we try to keep the semis off, but we still do send, uh, wind turbines right through. I mean, that, that happens all the time. And I'm, and I'm just wondering, you know, how long is that? Are, are, those bricks aren't designed to hold up to that kind of weight, are they?
Um, I mean, that, that's why you see in, you know, in the seventies, the city invests significantly in building truck routes, you know, making Vine Street a truck route, a southwest traffic way, Sixth Avenue, those improvements on there is, um, 'cause our most probably structurally deficient streets in town are the state highways through our central business district and, and what they, where you look at Vine Street and there's thirteen inches of asphalt under a, you know, a modified base that can handle that. Portions of Main and Central have maybe two inches of asphalt with brick and then just a crushed limestone or whatever.
Whatever they did underneath that, whatever they did back in the day. So that's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna be a future thing here?
Like, you know...
In the next twenty years?
A ve- very expensive thing. I mean, it, it's existed like that, has, um, and has held up quite well. Um, most of the failures in pavement, the pavement you see are more of due to the age of the asphalt, not so much, um, you see structural deficiencies or you see that sort of thing. It's, uh, the age of asphalt. Um, when we look at doing a project, uh, potentially like the downtown drainage improvements that we talked about in the CIP, where we're tearing up a good chunk of Central Avenue, um, that would be a way to address it. Um, the city hasn't had the ability to have KDOT partner with us to improve the integrit- integrity of those roads, um, the lifespan. Um, in the past, it's always been maintenance. So Millen overlays, they would contribute, um, up to two hundred thousand dollars a year to help us on a project, which in reality doesn't go very far at all. Um, they have implemented new programs that their funding could be used on things like doing a full-depth pavement, um, restoration and new subgrade, uh, up to a million dollars, but, um, those funds are very few, um, very difficult. I hope that kind of explains...
Yeah, I, I just, I, I saw that yesterday, and I was, I was like, oh, I wonder how far that, I mean, just trying to understand, because I knew you were talking about the storm sewer coming, that that's the problem, and that's how we fix the downtown flooding. And it just kind of all balled into one thing. Um, I wanna commend city staff last night, volunteers for Drums Across Kansas. That was a very good event. I saw Molly and, um, still, I can't remember the assistant's name.
Caitlin.
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 Yeah, see, you couldn't do it either. She, they, I, she was, they were both running around being good ambassadors to the city, so, um, I was really proud of them, uh, last night. That's all I got.
Good, thanks. Yeah, it was an incredible event, so glad, glad they were here for the third year. Hope we can keep it as a, as a regular stop. It's a marquee event for the stadium. Nine drum corps, that was a full night. Incredible sound. I don't have anything to add. Um, early in the month, I don't have any meetings, just getting caught up with meetings. I don't have anything to add today.
I drove by. Was the crowd bigger this year than...
Oh, yes. So that was one of my points. Um, I do report. I don't have the exact numbers yet, uh, but Molly did tell me that Drums Across Kansas sold approximately three hundred more tickets this year than they did last year.
Good. Good. So we don't have anything else? Mayor, do you...
Uh, just a few, just a few things. Um, just so the, the world knows, uh, the city has submitted in partnership with Butler Community College and USD four ninety, a Shrine Bowl bid, um, for the years twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two. We will not have it be awarded for all three years. We, they just are asking for bids for each of those three years. Um, we'll get, if we are likely to be awarded one, we will be awarded one of those years. Um, of course, as I say that, it will be all three, but they, the intent was not to necessarily award all three, it was to just send out one bid for three years. So we'll let you know. The result of that will be later this year, um, so we'll keep our ears to the ground on that one. And, um, we've been getting a lot of people pull up to City Hall, and they'll ask about trash bags. So I thought I'd give a quick update. It's actually one of the hottest things, um, the buzz about City Hall right now. Um, so trash bags are anticipated to return to City Hall by the end of the month. Um, we are probably gonna have a floodgate when they do get here, um, but we will get the orders in and we'll sell them for, I believe, the six bucks is what we have for. So they are, they're coming. They have been ordered. Um, so if you are watching this and you need, looking at your trash bag inventory, um, we'll get them soon enough, and you'll be able to get them and stock them up for our refuse department to pick up. Um, we, we ran out of them, I don't know, a few weeks ago or a month, a month or so ago, and we were kinda waiting whether we were gonna get more. We decided to go ahead and get more, but unfortunately, it takes several weeks of lead-up time to get them. Um, and so until that happens, we're, we're without trash bags, but we appreciate the public's patience on this, and once we get them here, we'll let everybody know.
All right, thank you. Is that it?
That's all I got.
Anything else for the good of the commission?
Um, how are we coming on flag, um, curators and just working on that? Have we...
Um, you know, to be honest with you, I think that I'm gonna shell up and talk about Drums Across Kansas, and now that that's done, um, we'll be able to focus more on the flag.
I just, just, I mean, it was, I already started working on trying to get some shirts, so...
Yep.
Okay. Well, if nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
We move adjourned.
Second.
Been moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.